I'd like to call the order, the Buckingham Plant and Commission Work Session for March 20th. Please stand as Commissioner Dory will lead us under invocation and Commissioner Cruz and pledge of allegiance.
Father, we just praise you for being here with us tonight. We ask you to guide and direct us to this meeting and give us wisdom to help our county, be with us throughout the meeting and help us along our way. We ask in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. That brings us to establish a quorum. We have seven of eight, so we do have a quorum. Nikki, is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a motion to approve then?
No.
Second? I have a motion and second to approve, any discussion? Saying not all in favor, raise your right hand. It's accepted. Okay. Nikki, that brings us to our presentations. Do you have a quick note that you need or?
I have a quick note. I believe Mr. Lanham is here and will be presenting first. I did include at each of your stations two printouts from G I S that actually show the properties that are encompassed in the M2 zoning area. One page is approximately 2,450 acres. It's located on Route 15 North, Bridgeport Road, One Way, Boxley, Steadfest Holdings, RMA Lumber. I believe that those may be all of the landowners. I did not print the landowners because it didn't have the capability to do so. And then the other printout from G I S is the property surrounding Kynite Mining Corporation. Looks like it's just around 2,250 acres, give or take.
Okay. Thank you, Nikki.
Just for a visual reference. Thank you.
Right. All right, that's the file. Very good. All right, before I introduce Rob, just a quick note. This is objectives tonight are to, as Commissioners, are basically just to try to gather as much information as possible in regards to the mining metals as minerals and also the processes that they go through, extraction processes, all sorts, fact finding mission. With that, I'll say I was contacted, Nikki and me, by Rob Lanham, and he offered to assemble a group of experts, mining experts, and some from professors from tech, I think, also engineers, excuse me. And so with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Rob. Rob, let you introduce the people that you assembled and let you take over the meeting. I understand we'll do presentations first and then we'll form a panel to ask questions.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Plant and Commission, thank you. Greatly appreciate the Commission taking the time to hear from industry and our panel. My panel here probably represents over 300 years of mining experience and mining experts, several of them are mining engineers, and they're all in the mining industry one way or another. Again, my name is Rob Lanham. I am the Aggregates Program Manager for the Virginia Transportation Construction Alliance. One of our membership segments is the metal, non-metal aggregate producers in Virginia. We represent over 92% of all the metal, non-metal material that is mined in Virginia, so we do speak for the industry. I've been in the aggregate mining industry since 1983 and in my role at V T C A since 2018, and again, I represent the metal, non-metal mining industry in Virginia. As Buckingham County weighs its options to address the future of mining, specifically gold mining operations in the county, the Plant and Commission wants to know more specifics on mining. We commend the Plant and Commission for reaching out to industry experts to ascertain this information. Our purpose here today is to provide accurate information related to mining so the Plant and Commission can make the best informed recommendation that will most benefit the citizens of Buckingham County. That is our purpose here today is to make sure we can give you as much information as we can so that you can, I watched you on the YouTube thing, and you said, "We need to know the definitions." And that's when I said, "I need to contact them and see if we can lend a hand." So here we are. To provide the Plant and Commission with the information on mining, V T C has assembled a panel of mining experts. Our panel that'll be presenting today will be a high-level overview of the important role mining plays in society and everyday life. An elevated look at mining and processing from Dr. Eric Westman. Dr. Westman is the interim department head at Virginia Tech's Mining and Minerals Engineering Department, arguably one of the best and strongest mining engineering schools in the country, maybe in the world. We will look at a local view from Mr. Guy Dixon, president of the Kynite Mining Corporation, and their role in Buckingham County and their role in the global market for their product that they mine. And we will also hear a perspective from construction aggregates from one of the oldest continually operated mines in the United States, the Arvonia Slate Mine. Spencer Young is the plant manager with Boxley, and he will give a kind of an overview of what their role is and the role of aggregates in today's society. I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about the role of mining in society. It's important to know this, and some of you may have seen the bumper stickers that say, "If it's not grown, it must be mined." Natural resources are either grown or they're mined, and they are the bases of all substances that are made are the natural resources that come from agricultural products or mined Mined minerals and metals are essential. Mined materials are ubiquitous in everyday life and everyday products. We were standing over in the other room there earlier, and we were looking around the room, and only the wood products in that room were not materials that were mined. Products including roads, buildings, medicines, food, industrial products, consumer products, agriculture, and too many other products to name mined materials go into. Oops, I changed the screen. I'm not doing that. One thing that's important to remember is mining can only occur where the resources reside. If the resources aren't in the ground here, there's no sense in mining there. Mineral deposits exist in earth where nature put them. We can't move them. We can't relocate them. We can't dig them where they're not. Therefore, again, they can only be mined where they exist. Buckingham County is blessed with a rich mineral, natural resources, and you need to make sure that that's something you understand, is that there are lots of very unique valuable mineral resources here in the county. It's also important to note that lost mineral resources are lost forever. New and expanding mining operations in Virginia must meet, whoop, wait a minute, that's the wrong paragraph. Lost mineral resources are lost forever. Mineral resources that are prohibited from recovery are lost. Future generations in society generally will not have the ability to access these resources when regulatory bans are put on them. So if you put a ban on metal mining, turning that around 20, 30, 50, 100 years from now is virtually impossible. So those resources are lost forever. There are many regulatory steps prior to mining that are already in place. Federal, new and expanding mining operations in Virginia must meet state, federal, and local requirements before they are approved to operate, including local zoning requirements and special use permits in most cases. Buckingham currently has the ideal scenario for permitting mining activities in M1 and A1 zoning. This allows most of the county's mineral resources to remain available for extraction, but require mining operations to obtain a special use permit. A special use permit allows the county the ability to deny and regulate these operations based on the specific applications. In Frederick County, Virginia, up in Winchester, their planning staff recommended that they remove 566 acres of extractive mining from a comprehensive land plan, and they've since reversed that, and one of the Plant and Commission members was quoted, "Extractive mining, not to talk a specific business, has been a benefit to the county, a benefit to all the residents, and to eliminate that business through land use planning would be a mistake on our part." That came from a Plant and Commissioner in Frederick County very recently, like in the last month or two. Responsible mining and reclamation provide the best outcome. Mining performed responsibly allows the utilization of the mineral resource. Responsible reclamation, which must be included in any mine plan and permit, ensures that the mine lands are left in a state that are at least as good prior to mining, if not better. There are lots of examples of reclaimed mines that are better sites when the mine is exhausted than they are. There's several that are golf courses. Anybody a golfer? Playing golf in an old mine's really cool. One thing that's really important to note as the county considers its options here is that metal and non-metal mining are synonymous with both federal and state regulatory agencies. The Mine Safety Health Administration, which is a federal government oversight on our safety, recognizes two mining components, as well as Virginia Energy's Division of Mineral Mining, or Virginia Energy. There's coal side, and then there's the metal slash non-metal. So metal and non-metal are always categorized together. The fact that metal and non-metal mining are classified together would make it conceivable that mineral or non-metal mining could also be banned if metal is banned. So if you ban metal, could that carry over to the non-metal? Just wanted to kind of go over a couple of specific Buckingham County facts. We understand that the Plant and Commission may be considering recommending a ban of chemicals used in mining and processing. Some chemical use is required for certain types of mining and is employed without issue. Additionally, a general ban of chemicals used in mining can set precedences that can creep into other industries. So if you're banning chemical in mining, another big industry here in the county that might use that chemical, you might set a precedent that that could carry over. Our panel asked for the Plant and Commission to submit any questions ahead of today's work session. Some of the questions received were related to chemical toxicity and harmful and long-term effects of chemical use in mining. Our panel can discuss the chemicals that may be used in certain types of mining and how they handle those chemicals. However, our panel does not consist of chemical experts that can discuss the toxicity of these chemicals or the effects on humans or the environment. Therefore, we will be unable to provide responses to those inquiries. Currently in Buckingham County, there are three active mines, two aggregate-slate mines, and one industrial mineral mine, the Kynite Mine. In 2021, these operations employ 211 workers and countless support jobs, truck drivers, contract tire people, whatever, you know, cleaning people for their offices. The average wage benefit compensation to the direct mining jobs in Buckingham County approaches $70,000 annually on an average for each mine site. So they are well-paying jobs with lots of benefits, and so we just wanted to make sure that you guys knew that fact. So first off, I'm going to, next up is going to be Dr. Eric Westman from Virginia Tech. And to keep me from having to come up here again, following Dr. Westman will be Guy Dixon, president of Kynite Mining. And following Guy Dixon, we'll hear from Spencer Young from Boxley-Arvonia Slate Plant. So we also have several other additional experts here that will be happy to answer any questions that the Commission members may have. So, Mr. Chairman, that's the end of my presentation, so turn it over to Dr. Westman.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
We appreciate the opportunity to be here. Appreciated the invocation, the request for wisdom. It's a big decision you all have in front of you, and I hope that this is helpful. Let me start by saying I am not unbiased. I love mining for whatever reason. I just kind of always have, something about the geology and the engineering. At the same time, I really don't want to be a jerk. If I come across like I know everything, I don't intend to do that. It's like my life's goal is to not be a jerk, so I don't want to come across that way. So, you know, we have 10,000 engineering students at Virginia Tech, and all of them in the first year are together, and they're trying to decide. Everyone thinks they want to be mechanical engineering or computer science, and we have a dozen different departments in the College of Engineering, and most students don't know about mining engineering and the potential there is. And so we, our job is to educate them, right? Our job is not to indoctrinate, our job is to educate. And so what I'm sharing with you this evening, you know, I hope this is not offensive or anything, but it's something that I've shared a number of times with 18-year-old engineering students, just about the relevance of mining. Why are we still mining today? And so this is a Google Maps photo from Northern Virginia. You can see Dulles Airport there. You can see Washington, D.C. over on the right. The things that are circled in green are crushed stone quarries. Many of the students in engineering at Virginia Tech come from Northern Virginia. Many of them are surprised to see that there's a quarry not far from where they live. They just weren't aware that the crushed stone quarries were there. They are everywhere that there's a town or a city, there's likely a crushed stone quarry nearby, providing the aggregate that goes into the concrete and the asphalt. So why do we still mine? In addition to the roads and the, you know, we still mine because of iPhones. I think there are more minerals in the human body than, I mean, in an iPhone than there are in the human body, right? There's a couple dollars' worth of gold in there. We use gold in iPhone because it's the metal that oxidizes the least. It keeps a good electrical connection regardless of how long it's been there. It doesn't rust. Of course, we use silicon in the screen. That's commonly sand, silicon dioxide, one of the more common. You can see the variety of elements that are there. I learned recently, one that is included but is not shown here is cobalt. There's cobalt related to the battery in the iPhone. Most of the cobalt odds are that it's mined in the Congo by miners whose average age is 14 years old. And so the point is, if it's not mined responsibly here, it will be mined irresponsibly somewhere else. Why do we still mine? We still mine because of renewable energy. Every five-megawatt wind turbine requires five tons of pure copper, right? So as the economy greens, as we get more renewable energies, we will need different types of mining, different types of minerals for that. Have a guest speaker coming to talk to our students tomorrow, the day after tomorrow, Wednesday, about lithium mining outside of Charlotte. The demand for lithium is through the roof, right? All the lithium ion batteries with the electrovoltic cars, electric cars, the E V cars, the demand for lithium is continuing to grow. And there are a variety of minerals for which that's the case. Why do we still mine roads and bridges and buildings? I mentioned the concrete, the asphalt, all of that comes from crushed stone. Average American uses about 5,000 pounds of crushed stone every year for the roads and bridges and buildings. We still mine because of duct tape. There's a quarry outside of Bacchan in Virginia, next to the James River. It's a limestone quarry. A lot of their product goes to make the three-tab asphalt shingles, the little granules that go on those roof shingles, things you never think about, right? Things you just, you don't realize. Those little granules come from a quarry. They come from a mine. Additionally, they sell their product to Walmart for their duct tape. It gives it the right tackiness, right? Things we just don't realize. The backing and the carpet probably has limestone in it also. The acid-free paper that we use for archiving, paper, you know, is wood pulp. It's naturally acidic. It's got the lignans in there. It's naturally acidic, so we have to add a base. So we mine a high purity limestone and run that through a kiln to get quick lime. That's very basic. We add that to the paper. It makes it acid-free, pH-neutral, so that it doesn't turn brown and fall apart in five years, right? It's archival paper. We use that same limestone in glass manufacturing, right? We just use all these minerals that we don't realize for so many different things. Titanium dioxide, rutile, has been mined near Petersburg. It's not currently mined, but it has been in the past, and it may be starting again. That goes into high-quality dairy whiteners, right? It's the titanium dioxide. Even the little white letter M on the M and Ms comes from titanium dioxide. And so things we just don't realize where they come from, so many of them come from mining. Here's an example we share with the students. When we think about mining, a lot of times we think about the consequences. Everything we do has consequences associated with it. I was talking to students this morning at my class in 9:05, who were talking about consequences and saying, you know, everything we do has consequences. You guys made the decision to get out of bed this morning, come to class. There are positive consequences associated with that. There may be negative consequences associated with that. A lot of times we think of consequences as a negative thing, but there are positive consequences associated with decisions as well. And so these are three countries from South America. They all have a port. They're all equivalent that way. We have data. The C I A has something called a fact book, and it has a variety of data for the different countries. And we can look at infant mortality, we can look at literacy rates for standard of living, for quality of life. Here are certain parameters shown here for these three different countries. GDP, the percent below poverty level, even the cell phones per 100 people, that's kind of a random data point. Nevertheless, it indicates potentially quality of life. But then also exports. And so as we look at these three companies, we can see that there's a vast difference. I asked the students, "Which country, if you had to move overseas, of these three, would you like to raise a family in?" And they choose Chile. And at the end of the day, these exports, there's 3% of the population in Chile that's involved in copper mining, and that provides about $60 billion to the country. Now, it's up to the government to make wise decisions about those funds, to invest those funds in education, in medical care, in infrastructure, right? But that can raise the quality of life. And so here's an example, much larger scale, but where 3% of the population is involved in copper mining, and it can make a dramatic increase, improvement in the quality of life for that country. increase, improvement in the quality of life for that country. Variety of mineral processing methods. My expertise is more along the mining than the mineral processing. The mineral processing is the purification of the metal. So you can imagine a ton of gold ore would be about the size of that table. Gold that's mined in Northern Nevada, in the Carlin Trend near Elko, has less than one gram of gold in that ton of ore. So how do we extract that gold? We crush it to a very small size. We use chemicals to leach out the metal. Normally, and in that case in Nevada, they use cyanide. They drip a cyanide solution over the crushed stone. They line the leach pad with thick rubber mats to collect that solution. That's where the gold is. They want to collect that solution, make sure none of it escapes. It's called the pregnant solution. And then they extract that solution, and they withdraw the gold from that, from that solution. So that's how they process gold typically. Different metals have different processing methods, right? With copper, it's not a cyanide heap leach. It's solvent exchange electro-winning. It's a different method. It's called SXEW. That's, that's what's used for processing, purifying the copper after it's extracted. On the other hand, crushed stone, used again for roads and bridges and buildings, for concrete and asphalt, it's a pretty darn simple mineral processing method, very little left over. We crush it, and then we run it over these screens to separate it out by different sizes. For concrete, maybe you're looking at half-inch and larger and smaller, you know, but can I have that size of particle? But you can see in asphalt, the particle sizes are generally smaller than they are in concrete. So we separate it out by sizes to have different products. Very simple for crushed stone. So different mining methods have different mineral processing methods associated with them. Permitting process, there's US federal legislation. You know, the 1960s were the decade of the environment. Rachel Carson with Silent Spring, there's a lot of demand for, for, hey, we need to take care of the environment. The 1970s were called the decade of environmental legislation, right? So we had the Clean Air Act, the Clean Water Act, the Surface Mine Conservation and, or Control and Recovery Acts, MACRA is also known as the Clean, Clean Land Act. So it's a federal law that requires, it has laws associated for mining and how to take care of the land. But it's enforced, all these laws are enforced by the state. For the state of Virginia, it's the DEQ. Mining operations require air permits, water permits, land permits. And really, it's, what I tell people is it's comparable to earning and keeping a driver's license. There's a process to go through, and the state is the one that provides that license, and the state can revoke the license, right? Just as there are good drivers and bad drivers, there are good mining operators, and unfortunately, there are bad mining operators. I mean, there are good mortgage lenders, and there are bad mortgage lenders, right? It's unfortunate fact of life. Not everyone does everything as well as they can. Everyone should. And it's our job, and it's your job, to make sure we are good stewards. So this is just a brief overview. I wanted to provide a background about the importance of mining, about steps in the mining process, and then about permitting. And again, the job is to be a good steward. We want to be a good neighbor at the end of the day. So with that, I'll turn it over. Again, appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Mr. Chairman, is there a way we can get a copy of this presentation?
Find it for me.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. I'm not sure where I should put this back.
Hello. My name's Guy Dixon, and I'm the President of Kynite Mining Corporation. Good to see you guys again. I'm here to give you a little background on what we do here and how we do it, and answer any questions that you have. So you've had the 10,000-foot level there, and I'm going to give you the two-inch level now. Anyway, as a lot of you know, Kynite Mining Corporation was, was founded a long time ago, 1927, and has been under the family ownership and management, my family, its ownership and management since 1943. So I don't know, that's three-quarters of a century or something. We began operations in Prince Edward, right on the Prince Edward, Charlotte County line, at a place called Baker Mountain. Our operation came to Buckingham in the mid-1950s when we opened up the Willis Mountain operation. We expanded into the area just north of Dilwyn and built a molite plant there that's still in operation today. That, I think that got started in the mid-1960s. We expanded again to an area a couple miles away from the Willis Mountain plant, which we call the East Ridge in the early 1970s. And then we expanded once again to a place we call the Geeski Plant, that commenced operations in the, in the 1980s. And then we did a major expansion there again in the early 2000s. We've been family-owned and operated for the last 80 years by the people who were born and raised here, who live in Buckingham, and who care deeply about this county. Kynite, just to give you a little bit of background about the mineral itself and how it's used, kynite is an alumina silicate mineral, and those mineral, mineralogical compounds, aluminum and silica, are not rare at all in nature. In fact, I think they're the most common constituents of the earth's crust that there, that there is. It is a little bit more unusual, though, that they're kind of combined in the ratios and with the right crystal structure to make a, to make a kynite mineral molecule. And it's those, it's that crystal structure and that combination that give it the physical properties that make it a useful thing for the, for the industrialized world. And it's valued for its heat resistance, and its thermal stability, and its other high-temperature properties. And what that means is almost all industrial furnaces in the world, anytime you have a big heat treatment process, like when you're making steel, or smelting aluminum, or melting copper, or casting any of those things into, into engine blocks, or the I-beams that hold this building up, or the jet engines that power our F-18s, you need these high-temperature ceramic raw materials. And so that is, you know, nothing really that happens in the world can happen without these high-temperature ceramic raw materials. No steel, no aluminum, no copper, no windmills, no power plants, no cars, no anything. It's, you know, and, and we play a little teeny, 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 teeny bit in that story. It's just like a lot of the things these gentlemen were mentioning. Very few people outside of Buckingham County who don't have my last name have ever heard of kynite. But it is a very important bit of kind of the, of what goes on in, in the world. And the world really kind of depends on our company, and ipso facto on Buckingham County, because we are, it depends on definitions here, but we're kind of the only industrialized source of high-quality, highly purified kynite in the world. There are other kynite mines, there are no other kynite mines in North America, none in Europe. And there are what I would call small artisanal, usually illegal mines in South America and Asia. But those products, like I said, in general, they're kind of fly-by-night operations, probably employing child labor. And then they don't really produce any significant volume, much less quality of a product. So to, to a great extent, the whole, what we do here helps keep the wheels of the, of the global economy going. And it's, it's definitely something that makes me stick my chest out in the morning when I, when I wake up. And I think it ought to do the same for everybody in this county, because it's pretty cool to, to have that. Well, it's, it's a, it's a high responsibility too, but it's also pretty, pretty fun. Anyway, we, and I could talk about anything you guys want me to, but I was just going to run down some, some, some facts here. You know, our contribution to the county, you know, we're the largest private employer, I'm pretty sure. We have 135 individuals working full-time for us, most of whom live in Buckingham, and all of whom live in South Side, Prince Edward and Charlotte and Cumberland. Our annual payroll is about $10 million. We contribute another million and a half dollars to the health insurance of all the people that work for us. We, and another million goes into these guys and gals' retirement plans every year. So that's a, that's a little bit of an economic contribution. I think we pay about half a million dollars in local taxes, mainly real estate taxes and personal property taxes. And a big chunk of that goes to Buckingham County, but to some to some other counties too. You know, we give a lot of money away each year. We give about $150,000 to charities each year, mainly to the local schools here in Buckingham, the fire departments, the rescue squads, any number of, of other local charities. And so, and we've done that for decades now, and hope to do it for decades more. We, obviously, people know we have a little bit of a special or extended community involvement with the, with the athletic fields and the, at the, at the park. And, you know, we, we have a special relationship, I think, with a lot of the county's emergency responders. We do, I should have worn my jacket, but our kind of motto is safety first. We've operated, like I said, for three-quarters of a century, and I know for a fact that we've never had a fatality. And in the 30 years that I've been involved, and I think John, who's been there for, for most of those years, will, will agree with this, we've never had a really serious injury. People get bumps and bruises and scrapes every once in a while, but I don't think we've ever had anybody to have a really, really even serious injury, much, much less a fatality. And that's something we take very seriously. We also take environmental stewardship very seriously. And we've won numerous environmental stewardship awards, including, I think this is right, seven state reclamation awards and even two national awards. The latest of which was a state of Virginia award, was received just last year, and that project is now in competition to win a third national award. And for a little family-owned mine like ours to win the best reclamation award in the entire United States, when we're competing against companies that we're rounding error on their income statement, is something that we're very proud of. We have, kind of moving more to the subject at hand, though, we have been here for so long, one of the reasons is we've, you know, we've, we've had, we have a good relationship with the county, and we have a big deposit, and we have purchased many acres of land over the decades, some of which we're mining now, but many of which we're not. And quite a few of those are not on M2 land. They're in probably A1 land right now. And so, you know, we, we bought those pieces of property with the understanding that nobody was going to rip the rug out from beneath our feet. And we need those pieces of property in order to continue, to be here 75 years from now, and for, for my great-grandchildren to be standing in front of y'all's great-grandchildren talking about this. You know, we can't have the rules radically ripped up and changed in, in the middle of the game, or at least that's not what we would want to do. So anyway, if, you know, what y'all are contemplating right now is very, is a big deal to us. And if you change those rules, it will for sure affect the longevity of what we're able to do in this county, or at least call that into question. And I'll kind of come back to like the fact that kynite's this alumina silicate, and that it's, that we're kind of the only game in town. Kynite is rarely mined in the world, but it's not rare in the earth's crust. There are several dozen great kynite deposits in this country alone, and there's probably several hundred great kynite deposits elsewhere in the world. And Kynite Mining Corporation owns land or has the right to mine in several of those other places other than Buckingham. However, we've never seriously considered starting another mining or processing operation anywhere else. We have a great kynite deposit here, and we own a lot of land that, that we assume that we could move on to. In addition, we've always felt that the community appreciates us, what we do, how we do it, and the good that it provides for the whole world. Therefore, we've always envisioned our operations continuing in Buckingham County ad infinitum. But we, you know, we're not naive, and as noted above, we have invested in land and mineral rights in other parts of the world, just in case. So my position is, you know, we strongly support the current zoning rules and the use of the special use permit mechanism. And we support the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission maintaining their power and discretion to approve and deny any future mining or industrial products on a case-by-case basis, depending on what's being mined, how useful it is to the world, the credibility of the people making the request, the process with which they're using. And it kind of seems crazy to us to hamstring yourself by just taking a huge chunk of very valuable minerals just off the table, carte blanche, and not giving yourself the freedom to make a rational choice when, when the time comes, that this, this project in its totality is a good project for the county or not. So anyway, that's just my two cents. And I'd be happy to answer any questions now or later that you have. I'm sure there's lots of things people want to know, and I'll do my best to.
If commissioners are fine, I want to let Mr. Dixon sit down, and then we'll just ask your questions during the panel. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Good evening. How are you all? I'm Spencer Young. Thanks for letting me come up here and introduce myself, talk about what Boxley and Buckingham Slate does, and maybe underscore why definitions are so important, because Rob Lannan put me in a group of quote-unquote "experts," and we didn't really set what that meant. But I'll, I'll tell you about Buckingham Slate. Does everybody know what Buckingham Slate is? There's a good use of it in this building here. Boxley Materials acquired Buckingham Slate in 2018, and we, we crush stone. We, we sell decorative stone, and we sell construction aggregate to, to people that put it in asphalt and, and ready mix. We employ 25 people, and the payroll is around 1.25 million. We do about 200,000 tons of that crushed stone locally, within 25 to 30 miles of Arbonia. And then we do sometimes 25,000 to 30,000 more tons of that exported from Boston to Chicago, Kansas City, and Orlando. And we use Buckingham Branch to help us get that to CSX. We have two mills that also produce roof tiles, architectural products, veneer, thin stone veneer, wallstone, mosaic, hardscapes, such as dimensional flagstone, irregular boulders, you name it. We have too much to kind of keep up with at times. And we've been there, mining the same pits since, since 1867, you know? So a lot of history there. That's 156 years in business. The deposit itself was discovered in the, in the late 1790s, and we have about 500 acres permitted to, to mine in compliance with the state and federal regulators. And, and we're here to sort of talk about what it means to be considered metal, non-metal. The Department of Labor, our friends with the federal government, refer to us as a metal and non-metal mining operation. And so you sort of know a little bit about what we do, and, and how we are considered metal and non-metal is, is not really clearly defined yet. But we do the same things as, as the other operators here with local fire and EMS donations, school donations, United Way Habitat builds here in town, and Adopt a Highway. We also participate in the Buckingham Anti-Litter campaign and enjoy that. And I'm here to help any way I can.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Paul Bush.
He had to leave.
Oh, he had to leave. Okay. All right. We'll probably have another opportunity to help him. All right. Robert Uh, Robert finishes the presentations. Do you want to assemble your panel here for questions, or just off cuff? How, how do you want to handle it?
Ever having your, like, Mr. Chairman, you want us to come up to the microphone so things?
Probably would be best.
YouTube world can hear us. Okay, well, we'll all kind of up to the.
Odom here, just to make sure that everyone.
I'll stand here.
Join you if that's okay.
All right.
Just please make sure that your answers go to the microphone.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank y'all, gentlemen. Um, commissioners, I'm going to turn it over for questions.
First one, uh, with regard to the definition metal, non-metal, is your implication that if we were to pass ordinances, if we were to pass ordinances as they relate to, uh, metal as an example, it would affect the non-metal mining organizations as well? I mean, is that, in other words, there's no way of being specific with regard to one or the other?
We, we believe so. Um, we, we believe so, that, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the deposits have metals in them, um, you know, trace amounts of metals. At what point is it a metal mine and isn't it a metal mine?
Metal in the rock for your mining with. I don't know whether ki- I mean, I've always thought of kynite as a non-metal, as an industrial mineral, but, but I don't really know, and, and I don't know whether, if I don't know, you guys probably don't know, but there clearly are things in the rock that are metals, that are being liberated every moment that we're doing what we're doing, and so, does that make us a, a metal mine? We're not af- we're after something that maybe is called a non-metal, but, yeah, so, so I don't know. The other thing I can't get my mind around is, is it really sensible to think that, let's just play a thought experiment, and so the, the green revolution continues apace, and you just heard about all the gargantuan amounts of copper and lithium and all this stuff that is needed. If we actually found some of those super valuable minerals that was high on the list of what, like, what's needed for national green energy or national defense or something, and we had a law against metal mining, and we're, but we're already mining there, would it be economically rational for us not to also extract that? Because we're already doing whatever kind of quote-unquote "damage" that you're doing going after the kynite, but all of a sudden, if we could actually be mining, extracting copper from the exact same ground that we're, we're extracting the kynite from, that, I mean, it seems like economic suicide to say that, oh, no, 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 that's a metal, you can't actually take that, or, you know, no, just think about that for a minute. Like, it just, it's economic insanity. So even if, I mean, I don't know, kynite is a metal or non-metal, you, you guys, I mean, y'all are the ones getting ready to make the rule, so you've got to be pretty clear, and, and, and is it the mineral that you're after, or is it the mineral that's in the rock that you're blowing up? And even if there're no, even if it's the mineral that you're after is a non-metal, and even if you don't have any metals at all in the rock that you're blowing up, but you move into an area that does, is it actually sensible to restrict the ability to, to get a twofer, so to speak? Anyway.
Yes, sir. Uh, with regard to Mr. Dixon's, uh, discussion, uh, what is the vision of your company? Is it, is it just to mine, or is it to mine something specific? But what's the vision?
For seventy-five years, you know, we've been mining kynite, and that's the vision.
Okay.
So, so we don't have any plans to.
No, no, that's fine.
Mine anything else, but, but we do.
It's a good answer. I don't mean to interrupt, but.
Okay.
My point is, the purpose of your organization is to mine mineral. Am I right?
It's to mine kynite. You tell me whether it's a, whether it's a, whether it's a metal or a non-metal. I don't, I don't know.
Vision is to mine kynite.
Right.
All right, so in this land that you just purchased, this land, this expansion that you?
Well, it's, I wouldn't say just. I mean, it's been done over the last seventy years. We've accumulated lots of land.
Do you have the same vision, or are you intending to do something different?
Not, we're not intending, but we don't, we, we also don't feel like it's rational to rest- to, to be restricted. If we're mining one mineral and another mineral is in the ore body, well, well, we're doing that now, right? We don't just sell kynite, we sell quartz sand because it's, it's a byproduct. We, we try to sell the iron, which is a, we don't, not very successful at, at selling that, but that's a, that's a metal. We try to sell the pyrite, that's iron sulfide. Is that, is that a metal? I, I don't know. I mean.
My, my point is, the main purpose that you're, what you're doing is looking for kynite, and you're processing and selling kynite.
That's correct.
You have byproducts, and you do some things with byproducts, too.
Right.
But your intention is to do alumina sulfate or silica.
Lumina silicate. Well, that, I mean, that, that is our core business, that's the name of the company, that's obviously what we've been doing, and yet, we do sell the byproducts. We're always looking to, to be able to use more of the resource.
So when you, when you move into the future, is your future plan to stay in the current business, or are you going to expand into specifically mining metals and metal processing?
Uh, we don't have any plans to do that. We don't have any reason to think that's possible, but it, I mean, if it became possible, it would be wonderful.
Okay.
From our perspective.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Okay. Don't, don't go. You define yourself as a mineral company, is that correct?
I've always thought of.
Not, not always thought. You define yourself, you call yourself a mineral company, correct?
Well, I've never thought of it.
It's your paper.
Yeah. So, we, we've always said we are industrial min- kynite is an industrial mineral.
Okay.
But, but, but metals are minerals, too. So that, that doesn't exclude.
And I've seen that, I've seen that. I've looked up what kynite is. I've been to the kynite mine. I've toured kynite. Okay, so.
Great.
Okay, um, uh, all the way to the top where you can look out.
Yeah, it's pretty up there, isn't it?
It is, very pretty. But what I'm seeing is you define yourself, um, as a mineral, and I'm looking at your paper, it says mineral here, and when I've looked up kynite, I've seen metal, mineral, and so.
You've seen, sorry, excuse me, you've seen.
I've seen metal, I've seen both definitions, metal, metal and mineral. I'm asking you how you define yourself.
I have always, this question has never become an issue until the last couple of weeks in my mind. But we, I've always said we're an industrial mineral.
Okay.
As opposed to a metal like lead or copper or zinc, but it's.
That's all I want to know, how you define yourself. Okay, and Slate, how do you define yourself? Are you?
We're a heavy side construction material aggregate producer. We sell hardscapes. We crush stone.
Okay, so is Slate a mineral? What is Slate?
It, it's a, it's a rock.
It's a rock.
It's a, it's a, it's a mineral, yeah.
It's a mineral also. It's defined as a mineral also.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm trying to get that clarity.
Yeah.
And, and I love Slate. I've got special Slate.
I'm, I'm here because I love it.
Okay. And that's, and I've been out there, so, I've, and I've got a huge quartz, um, a kynite rock, okay, that was given to me when I went up there. So, I know the company, I know the company. I want to know how you define yourself. So as we work with it, we know if we're talking metal, we're talking mineral mining and how it affects those organizations within the county that are already in the county, too. That's all I want to know, is how you define yourself.
Yes.
So, back to Mr. Dixon, sorry, keep pulling you up here. So, all these conversations tie in together because I think we're trying to get to a place where we're comfortable here, you know, we're, we're here, and there's the state level, and there's the federal level, and, you know, they have people for this, and right now, we don't have people. Here are our people tonight. So, when you say, and your counterparts at Boxley talk about your designation by the state as metal, non-metal, and Department of Labor, you just recognize that you guys pull iron out as well. Does the state treat you any differently for the two, or, you know, all of the?
As far as I know, no. And I think that's what they're saying, is the state doesn't view there being a difference between metal and non-metal.
Right, and that, that's what concerns me, is us at a local level trying to define what those are. So I just wanted some clarification on how the state treats.
Yeah, I, I mean, of course, I'm deeply interested in y'all's definition of that.
The federal government and the state really just, just splits between what is coal and what is metal, non-metal.
Right. So, so when they come out to your plant and to Mr. Dixon's plant, they don't, they don't say, "Let me see this," and they'll let me sell the metal you pulled out separately. There is no separate paperwork for that, it's just a.
And that, that's a point that we're, that we're trying to make, is metal, non-metal is synonymous with one another. There's, there's not any difference in how the regulators deal with those operations. Um, again, you know, Mr. Dixon is, is, if he's selling off the iron out of his plant, does that make him now a metal mine?
Right.
I mean, iron clearly is a metal. Kynite is a mineral. So, what happens, so, that's, that's the, the caution that we're advising you of before you start deciding to split mineral, metal from mineral, it's, it's not a clear divisive split, um, and, and it's not one that is recognized by any regulatory agency. So, trying to, to figure that would be, would be really hard. Eric, am I on point with that? So, you know, Eric's been teaching mining engineering for, I don't know how long, and, and, you know, if Virginia Tech's mining engineering school can't clearly define metal from mineral, then nobody can.
Yes. Uh, with regard to what you're saying, and I respect that, the question is, if you were in the business of, uh, providing iron, you know, mining and, and processing iron versus mining and processing a mineral, all right, would the state or the federal government get involved in the processing regulations with regard to those two different materials? I mean, if you sell iron or, or ore, are you forced to do something regulatory-wise different than you do when you, when you process, as an example, kynite?
Not that I know of, no.
So, iron's a natural byproduct of what you do, you accumulate it, and then you just sell it in bulk.
Right, right. That, that iron's separated, going to be separated out whether we sell it or not.
Uh, okay, so there's really.
It's just, it's just part of the process.
There's no difference in your process. So, if, if I were looking at somebody who specifically mined iron, iron ore, would the, would their, obviously, that's not a, that's not a byproduct. It's, it's iron ore that they're after, that's their mission. Would their regulations differ, or is it under the state, would it be the same regulations?
I don't know the answer to that. They, they would be the same.
That's what I'm asking. They would be the same?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We have, or you guys have invited some folks from Department of Energy's Mineral Mining that might be better suited to answer that because they are the state regulatory agency.
Okay.
So.
Would one of y'all gentlemen like to come up and address that for us, please?
Guys are law.
That's good. That's good.
Good evening. Paul Saunders, I'm the, um, manager of safety and program. And as it's been spoken up, up at, up here.
Put a mic over.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I said, my name's Paul Saunders, I'm with the Virginia Department of Energy's Mineral Mining Program. We regulate minerals, and minerals, the discussion that you're having up here is kynite a mineral? Is it a metal? Both of them are minerals, so they basically fall under the same regulatory review program. So we would not treat an iron mine any differently than we would treat a kynite mine.
Okay, so, I'm sorry. Yeah?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so if we're talking about metalliferous minerals, golds, or, or economic minerals, would they be regulated differently?
All the regulations are the same.
All the, they're all the same?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions here for the? Yes, go ahead.
We're speaking of, uh, total mining, and we're looking at contamination, or all of the operations, how do you, how do you project contamination? And we're looking at gold, and I'm seeing that gold is, you're using cyanide with gold. How, how do you guys work with contamination products or anything like that?
Are you asking about specific chemicals that we bring on site?
Right, yeah.
Um, so we, we have certain chemicals that we use, um, you know, anything from hydraulic oil, you know, where we have material safety data sheets if, if there's a spill, or we have an action plan in place if there is, and then we, we subcontract, um, some of the blasting that's done, where, where there's ammonium nitrate or emulex brought into the site to, to explode, detonate, and, and move the material out from the wall, and, um, that chemical is regulated by that contractor. We, um, most of the time, it's, it's ammonium nitrate, and it's, uh, it's gypsum powder, it's a, it's a, um, it, we don't, we don't keep it on hand, um, really, and, and it's not part of the process, other than the explosion itself to, to get the rock out for the, for the crushing and sawing, milling process. We have a list of chemicals that we, we have on site that are contained, um, and, you know, in, in some bulk quantities, and it's like diesel fuel.
Right.
Oil for some of the motors and crushers and things.
And for, for your large volume chemicals like diesel fuel, you're required from DEQ, I believe, to get a permit for the tanks, correct? So DEQ comes and inspects your tanks. So, Virginia Energy reviews your plan when you, when you go to apply for the permit, your, your plan is reviewed by the D, uh, DMM, the mineral mining folks at Virginia Energy, and then DEQ, um, checks and inspects your tanks and makes you renew your permits every so often for those tanks. And with that, you've got to have spill containments and things like that. I, the, the aggregate producers, which, which I know best, that's probably the, the extent of the volume of the chemicals that they use in any bulk, is diesel fuel, hydraulic fuel, uh, the blasting components, most don't store on site anymore, most use a contract blaster that brings, brings them in, load them in the hole, and blast that day, so they're not on site for many more than a few hours. Um, so, I'm not familiar with, with that, and can't speak to it. Dr. Westman, do you have any thing to?
Nothing to add, no.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
On your material safety data sheets, you carry them, do you require your subcontractors to have them?
Sure.
On everything that you have there?
Yes.
And I'm asking, okay, let, let me say this, I'm a nurse. I know material safety data sheets, I'm close and personal. Thank you. That's why I'm asking. You may have them, but do you require your subcontractors?
Yes, if, if they're not in physical form, everything's now kind of gone digitally, so there has to be, uh, you, you can scan a QR code, and you can get the instant readout of the, the danger that that material could possess to you if on skin, eyes, and, inhaled or whatever. So, yes, it's required that anybody that brings anything that's considered toxic, they have to have, or provide the material safety data information with it.
And that is, that is the MSHA federal law. Matter of fact, one of our members received a citation for having a spray can of deodorant in the bathroom.
Okay.
I'm not joking.
No.
No.
Well, look, yeah, I have a few things to say. Well, if you ride down Arvonia, you can find a whole lot of homes that have, um, roofs.
Slate roofs.
Slate roofs on it.
Yeah.
Pile them, they used to be.
Yep.
I know that's changed a little bit. And, you know, the mining part, in my part, my thoughts was not to put mining into, uh, what we're going to take away from the county. I know we got gold mining that we're talking about, and then to kind of change it over to a metal mining. So, y'all's mining, y'all's mining, and gold mining and metal mining, what would be different on their, the gold mining and metal mining that we could stop or slow them down or get them where they wouldn't be, um, bad for the county? or get them where they wouldn't be bad for the county? What could we do differently not to hurt nobody that we already got? To me, I don't want to put nothing about mining because I don't want to take away from what we already have. But I wanted to figure some kind of chemical, or is it somewhere else? It don't have to be chemicals, it just whatever, whatever will help us. And I just want your opinion on that, too.
The special use permit.
So, just what you're saying is to make sure that we have no zoning, that it's in the byright for mining, to put it into where you have to have an SUP for mining, and then we can stop them, get rid of them.
You have that now.
Yeah.
And... Yeah. And, you know... You know... The fear, to me, and I would have this fear as well, is the cyanide and that whole process. And, you know, Dr. Westman explained how they build those leachate ponds and all of that. I mean, they're probably built stricter than a landfill, sanitary landfill is built. Do they fail? Yes, once in a while, one will fail. But there's other ways, and I wish the goldmine gentleman, goldmine gentleman was still here because there are other ways to process gold other than leachate. You know, if you hit a big enough load, you can separate it mechanically with a sluice, something like that. And I think there's some other chemicals they're starting to use that are less hazardous than cyanide. So, you know, again, the special use permit is your ability to look at the gold mine, if it's going to be a gold mine, or an aggregate mine, or a kyanite mine, or copper mine, to look at that individual mine and say, "Yep, we like what you have planned here. You're going to use no cyanide, you're going to, you know, this, and you're going to that. We like that, so we'll approve it under these conditions." If you don't like what they're proposing, you say, "We're not going to give you the permit here."
Whether it's metal or non-metal, you have that power.
Yeah.
To take a look at the totality of the situation, decide whether you think the process is appropriate, the chemical's going to be... Organization that stands behind it. Honorable one, forget whether it's metal or non-metal, that doesn't matter. What matters is the individual, what's being mined, how it's being mined, what... credibility of the people that's... Because at the end of the day, that's really what matters.
An irresponsible aggregate mine can cause extreme environmental damage. I don't know how much human damage that they could do, but... What's that? You know, but an irresponsible one, you know, that doesn't treat their water correctly and doesn't, you know, treat their air correctly, is going to be an eyesore and an environmental disaster, okay? So, mining can be done responsibly. Mining is done responsibly every day across this country. Dr. Westman pointed out, if it's not going to be done here with regulatory oversight, it's going to be done somewhere else with children. There's a TikTok video or a Reels video that shows a cobalt mine in, I don't know where. There's 15,000 people in this mine with picks and shovels, digging out baskets of cobalt. Not an ounce of sediment control, not an ounce of safety anywhere. People die in that mine every day. So, if we're not going to have responsible mining here, it's going to be done irresponsible elsewhere. So, that's just kind of our two cents worth here that we can offer. You know, Buckham, again, Buckham County is blessed with lots of good minerals here that will be important for the future of society, will be important for the environmental future in society, so...
And we don't know right now, sitting here, exactly what the... We can project right now, we think, you know, whatever.
Mr. Dixon, if what I have to say is extremely important, I just want to...
We can't, you can't predict right now what will be the, like, save the world mineral 30 years from now, 40 years from now. Why, like, saw off 80% of the potential right now? Because you're trying, specifically, somebody's pissed off about one certain type of processing of gold mining. And is the solution to that to say, no metal mining, full stop? Hundreds and hundreds of minerals, many of which could save the world, so to speak? And God knows what economically beneficial for the county. Anyway, you have the power right now to take a case-by-case basis, not only on metals, but also on non-metals. You've got the power to do that. Just use that.
Thirty years ago, lithium mines were probably sitting idle. Now, we don't have enough of them.
I understand.
Yeah. So, you know, that's... Don't pigeonhole the future of the county and the future of society. And as we see with kyanite, don't pigeonhole the future of the global market in some products.
I have a question for the regulatory people. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
With regard to regulations, are all these mines, particularly those around Virginia, are you requiring groundwater monitoring or ground gas monitoring? I mean, is there... Is that what is occurring now?
If the mining is conducted below the water table, groundwater assessments are required.
And so, you're asking people to put in these wells around, monitoring wells?
Generally speaking, yes.
Okay, all right.
It a lot depends on the depth of the mining. You know, we have a lot of shallow sand mine distances and that kind of thing before you get into actual requirements for wells and those kind of things. For mines, you generally cannot do a study without, you know, that kind of monitoring.
So, how deep is that you're talking about?
How deep is the deeper mines?
Is it mines where you call a well, deep enough where they're getting into a well?
Typically, your quarries are going to get, you know, 100, 200, 300 feet deep. Obviously, the zone of depression there becomes much wider, and groundwater flows are affected in a much greater distance away from the mining activity. If you've got a very shallow 20-foot sand excavation right there, you're going to have a very small zone of depression right there. So, if you don't have any wells within a couple thousand feet, you don't have a problem. And this is groundwater quantity, not groundwater quality issue. Once again, you know, as I said, there's no chemicals involved in the separation process. You know, generally speaking, more of a groundwater quantity issue than a groundwater quality issue.
So, I understand that, you know, people are always concerned with cyanide and some of these other TBEs, as an example. I don't know. I mean, how do you address the mine acid issue?
Talking about acid-bearing materials?
Right.
Generally speaking, you know, they're going to have to reclaim in a manner that encapsulates that material so you don't get, you know, long-term acid mine drainage issues at reclamation time.
So, are you... At reclamation, so are you monitor, are you regulating? Let's say they bring up pyrite and oxidizes, and all of a sudden, you've got sulfuric acid. So, you've got a mining acid. Is that being monitored by the state?
It's being monitored mainly in the outflows, which would come under DEQ's water regulations.
Okay, so then...
So, they're going to be paying attention to the...
So, they have a DEQ regulation they have to follow? Okay.
They have...
Okay, thank you.
We monitor it. We...
Go to the mic, go to the mic.
Yeah, so there's pyrites in the rock on Willis Mountain. And when you liberate those, you create, you know, the opportunity for the creation of a low pH water runoff. And we go through all kinds of rigmarole to neutralize that before it leaves the property. And then, I don't know, John would know better than I do, but there's probably five or 10, maybe even 15 places that we monitor weekly to make sure that the pH is brought back up to something approximating neutral.
Before it's raised?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, the stormwater is... The permit is designed by a civil engineer, and it's approved by mineral mining before you can get your permit to operate a quarry. Then, that permit is administered through DEQ. And you've got to follow all the DEQ regulations with that permit for your stormwater and your runoff.
To regulation, again, what happened to our... There he is. I mean, with regard to some of the issues that you're coming into, I don't... I mean, in particular, as it relates to cyanide slurry ponds. I... Are you finding... It seems to me, if that's a carrier of the metal, you're going to want to capture as much of that as you can. I can't imagine...
We have no cyanide slurry ponds.
So, I mean, they go into these... I'm sorry again, you said?
I said, we have no cyanide slurry ponds in the state.
You have holding ponds, right?
We have holding ponds.
All right, so I can't imagine anybody would want to release that since that's where the metals are, right? So, they'd want to reclaim that cyanide, correct?
What?
Is that how it works?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, with the heap leaching for the gold, yes, that's right. You put the liner down, and then you sprinkle the cyanide over it, and you collect that because that's where the gold is. And so, yeah, it's very... Yeah, you don't... That's where the value is.
Right, and I'd imagine the cyanide's pretty expensive anyway, so you'd probably want to reuse it. So, really, isn't the larger problem the mining acid?
The acid mine drainage?
Right.
Yeah, the oxidation of the fool's gold, that's right, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, I just, I missed a step somewhere. Because you were asking about cyanide slurry ponds, and he said he didn't have any.
Yeah, I think you had holding ponds.
Okay, you meant holding ponds. Okay, and monitoring holding ponds. But you just said you had no cyanide.
Yeah, there's no cyanide.
There's none in Virginia.
There's no cyanide being used in Virginia.
Okay, but the discussion went on, is if we were talking about cyanide, and that's why I said I missed a step.
He was talking about sediment or slurry ponds when you're...
Sediment?
Yeah.
Not cyanide?
Correct.
Okay.
He clarified his question.
Okay, I missed that because I'm taking notes, and I just want to make sure we're talking sediment.
Yeah.
We're talking the holding ponds.
The holding ponds.
But there are no cyanide ponds.
Right, and I was saying, if there were to be cyanide, or, you know, if, you know, what they do in Nevada, where they do have cyanide, they want to make sure that they collect it.
Right.
I was not implying that there are any here in Virginia.
That's a...
Pardon?
I was not implying that there are any here in Virginia.
No, but it just sounded like you were discussing cyanide ponds right after you said there were known. That's all, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, Steve.
Is cyanide banned in Virginia? Again, Paul?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
In fact, there was a bill, I think, that came up, and the bill was pulled.
Because when we first got into gold mining process, it was told us that it was banned, but now I'm hearing it's maybe not banned.
They said there was a bill that came up, or at least was discussed in this assembly session right there, but it was withdrawn.
Okay.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
Again, we thank the planning commission very much for letting us come and address. You hopefully, you found our information beneficial and useful. And, you know, you guys have a big decision to make here that's important to the residents of the county and a great responsibility. So, we greatly appreciate you guys wanting to get all the information that you can. So, anything else that we can provide? Nikki's got my contact information. She has the PowerPoint from Dr. Westman, so she can share that with you. And again, if any of you have a question or going out on a limb, but if anybody wants to visit a mine site that hasn't been in one, let us know. We can certainly arrange a tour for you. One of our members, easy enough, so that you can see what we do and how we do it.
Rob, I'd like to thank you on behalf of the commission. I appreciate you taking a step to contact us and summoning the experts here. And I'd like to thank every individual that took time to come here and speak. I really, you gave us some real important information. I really appreciate that. Thank you very much, as well as the officials from the government. Thank you. Heck, that brings us to the commission matters and concerns. We had tried to schedule another work session. I know what is April the 10th. We have the comp plan, correct?
Comp plan kickoff, yes, sir.
And we had discussed the following... What, I forgot now, should have wrote it down. Which is a Wednesday, right?
The board meeting has moved to the 17th, so that's a Monday. We had talked about Wednesday, the night.
19th?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. What I'd like to do is ask the commission, hold on just a second, is would you... We have a work session scheduled for April the 10th, and that's a comp plan, the introduction. We discussed the 19th of Wednesday. It'd be at 6:00, if you wanted to have another work session. So, I'm asking the commission their favor. It's a discussion, and then we'll take a vote on it and see if it's enough to want to do that. I'm opening up the discussion. All right.
I don't know about the rest, but I got to tell you, I think there's still a lot of information I'm lacking before I can make any kind of decision.
Well, we got a lot tonight, but there's still quite a bit more, and...
In addition, I think we had some people... We had the proponents, but we had some opponents. And I'd like to hear some of their comments.
Well, I was going... I got a late email, and I was going to talk to one to ask her to, if she'd be willing to give a summary of her position at our next work session, maybe 20 minutes, if that's satisfactory.
We have a visitor here, too, as a matter of fact, who's... I, if I might, just ask, who've you got here, Heidi? Who've we got here that wants to talk?
I'll talk to them after the meeting, yeah. Right now, we need to find out whether we are going to schedule this work session, if the committee wants to do that. Yeah, you'll make a motion to it?
My second.
I have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, they can do that on Wednesday, April 19, 6:00 here. Raise your right hand. Okay, we're scheduled for that. All right. Any other commissioners have anything you need to bring up?
Yes, sir.
Yes, George.
We went to the land use conference. And along with that, with this discussion, I would like to, say, debrief or have a discussion of... Because five individuals went, and we may have taken away five different things from that conference. And so, I think we need to discuss what we brought back from the conference. So, I'd like to see a portion of that time used to at least present what we brought back because it may be helpful to the rest of the planning commission.
Okay, well, one of the five individuals that went to the training, they prepared just a quick little summary of what they feel like they need to share with the committee, and we'll do it before the end of that work session.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other commissioners? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn the work session?
Agreed.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. We are adjourned. Thank you.